Good evening. I call to order the Orders Directors Committee of the whole meeting for November 21st, 2024. Will everyone please stand before the 30. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag. We're gonna skip to the background. Just to be more properly. Just standing. One more session. Okay. We should just give the two pictures. Yes. Okay, we'll have a roll call.
All right, roll call. Betty McLaren.
Present.
Tashlee Morales.
Present.
Lawrence Hamm.
Present.
Joan Neal.
Present.
Bill Riley.
Present.
Amanda Johnson. Present. Lorraine Lavender-Sams. Beverly Harris.
Present.
Kim Washington. Roll call has been completed.
Thank you. Okay, we'll have the Delaware County Intermediate Unit reports from Chair Betty McLaren.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The DCIU is currently undergoing several projects to enhance the CTE schools. There's doing one at Falkroth. They're increasing the one in Brumal, which is a nursing program. And they're actually getting ready to do another one for the SEL, the troubled children. And other things would be their updates with regards to the legislation because Shapiro's administration first ever investment of 175 million to repair school buildings and ensure kids have a safe, healthy learning environment through new initiatives. And the others, I think Ms. Morales will go through. That's it. End of my report. The biggest of it is the buildings and the improvements or moderations that they're doing to their school sites.
Is the funding for the building, that they're gonna be a one-time investment? And did they say how they decided which schools were gonna get it?
This, you're talking about what I was referring to are the CTEs that DCIU have Delaware County Intermediate Unit. And our children, our students go to for half a day. Depending on, and depending on what they're taking determines what building they go to. How many students do we have, Dr. Sutton?
I'm not sure how many students we have that attend the DCIU. But if there's a program, a CTE program that the DCIU has that we also have, we have our students. Most students that go to the DCIU are attending like nursing, because we don't have nursing here, like healthcare, stuff like that. But if it's a program that we have here again, we have to make a statement for our program. Because there is a cost that would be associated with sending our students to the DCIU.
And is there a reason why a student will go to DCIU for nursing instead of DCC?
I don't know that answer.
I do. The program through DCIU, I believe it's one year, is intense as opposed to Delaware County Community College. And I think the cost is different.
Delaware Community College is longer?
And more expensive. I do think that some of the, I appreciate the fact that Chester Upland is trying to create CTEs. I think if the students have the ability to attend DCIU, I think it would be good for them because they're further along in the development of their CTE. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I think that's debatable. I mean, Chester has had CTEs for a long time, right? So I think we have some programs that we had for a period of time where teachers teach them that are well-logged. And there are some newer programs that we're trying to develop now. It's like Teachers Academy. We haven't been able to fill, we've been there with the Teachers Academy. So we do send those students to the DCIU. But had we been able to fill that position, we would have kept that program here and tried to develop it. If we don't have the students for the programs, then they're not existing, right? And we lose funding that way as well.
Do you think that if the students knew that enrolling in those programs would mean that they could leave the school premises for a certain period during the day, would be more of an incentive for them to enroll? I only say that because not to say that our programs are not good, but the stability function of it. So you just said that because we didn't have a teacher, we couldn't have a program. But if the DCIU has the program, they're gonna have to have the program because they're the Delaware County Intermediate Unit.
Yeah, in those situations, we made the decision to send the students to that program, right? So I gave the example of the Teachers Academy. We weren't able to fill that position in terms of having a teacher there, so we sent those students to the DCIU. But we prefer, I mean, I believe there's like a 13, as you would know that number better now, between 13 and $19,000 for students to send them to the DCIU. I don't know if you know that number offhand.
No, I mean.
So it is a significant cost to send them to the DCIU. It's not.
It is not.
Do we know how many students are attending?
I want to get a number like 30, but I need that number too. I'll let you know.
But 30 is not specifically from us, right? That's for the.
No, that's Chester High and St.
I just believe that some of those programs are longer standing and they have a better track record. And if our students are academically able to compete, then that's where they should be. I'm done.
Any other questions? Now we'll have our legislative ladies' round report by Chair Tashlee Morales.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So on November 2nd, I had the honor of representing Chester High School District 4 at the PSBA Delicate Assembly. It was very interesting. And in that space, PSBA voted on the platform that they were going to support for the 2025-2026 season. Advocacy season kicks off in December, so that's when you will start seeing my emails, asking for babies to go to Harrisburg, Beck. All of that, those things, we can start asking for money again on behalf of the district. But what PSBA does, they select certain platforms that they also are going to push and put their organizational name behind. And so those platforms this year include requesting financial investment for school districts that is using a fair ethical funding system. This is important because even though PSBA has never said that they're not for it, they've never come out and say we're going to support it. So that's why that's important. And also the comprehensive and meaningful charter school reforms reducing financial burden on school districts. Again, they've never expressly came out and said they don't support charter reform, but this year they're putting their name behind it. And then four other new platforms are prioritizing mental health needs of students and seeking permanent funding streams to assist for such purposes, as well as seeking permanent funding streams for school safety and improvements to school districts and giving us the flexibility to use those. So a lot of times we'll get money, but then there's so many strings attached to it that you can't even really use it because of how boxed in funds are. So the ask is, give us the money and let us have flexibility in how we use that money to better our school safety environment. And then a push to expand universal free breakfast and lunch for every student in the state and to improve the pipeline and focus mechanisms to promote and grow public education as a. Then legislative-wise, we have a few House bills and Senate bills that have become law now. So Republican-sponsored Senate Bill 232 is now Act 120. And this is amending the PA School Code by establishing protocols for ticks in school and providing lawn disease education to parents. This became effective October 24, 2024. Republican-sponsored Senate Bill 801 is now Act 135. And this amends PA School Code and ensures certification of teachers providing structured literacy. And this is labeled under literacy achievement for all Pennsylvanians. That became effective October 31st, 2024. And Republican-sponsored Senate Bill 1160 is now Act 124, which designates March 29th as Vietnam War Veterans Day. While it encourages schools to observe, it's not a mandate that schools observe. And that's all I have now except for to say, please don't ignore my emails when you see them come regarding advocacy and wishing for funding and how that funding is going to be used and things of that.
Stop there.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll move on to our curriculum report.
Good evening. There are three or four points that the department will have on this next week's agenda. Meeting specialists on December 1st to the 3rd will be attending a conference in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. Not hiding will be district-wide events, purchase of materials. Could you reiterate again? I missed that.
Yes, so. So yes, on the agenda coming, the materials and resources needed for students to participate in the district-wide events is what is going to be on the agenda. So for example, Science Fair is coming up, and we'd like to have the trifold boards available for students who cannot purchase them on their own. And then some items for the science experiments that students want to complete. Yes, we're very excited about that. And for the Spelling Bee and some other of the events, there are other items that need to be purchased. Cards for the math games and just different things like that.
And then third thing, PLL teachers are going to DCIU, correct?
Yes, they go to DCIU for professional development. We have a growing population of English language learners. And so our teachers are trying to get prepared for those students and learn more about how to incorporate different instructional strategies. And to do that, they're going to professional development at the DCIU.
Fourth thing, you will present it, right? On the 26th?
November 26th, yes. Okay.
She presented at the board meet, receivers meet on Tuesday.
Uh, next week?
Great, then next week.
Yeah, Tuesday.
Do you have dates for the Science Fair and Spelling Bee?
December 18th is the district-wide Science Fair. And the Spelling Bee, I believe that's in January. I do not have the exact date on me. But you all should know that there are events that happen at the school levels first before the children are selected to come to the district events. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. And Dr. Parker, feel free to reach out to us to volunteer.
Absolutely.
I think I sent my email back about the Science Fair as well.
If you did not, I could take it now and make sure that Mr. Outhman knows about it if you'd like.
No, I think I did.
Okay.
So what's the date?
December 18th is the date of the Science Fair.
Was that on Wednesday?
18th.
It is.
And then why Christmas, I said, it was Wednesday, Christmas falls on Wednesday, it's 25th.
Yeah, so the 18th, yeah.
18th, I said Wednesday.
And it'll be held here in the gymnasium here.
How many, how many vouchers do you need?
And we can always take volunteers because there are lots of other positions and things to do besides being a judge. So if you'd like to be like a greeter, or we have people helping the students get their board set up. So there's lots of other opportunities to support the event if you'd like. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Dr. Parker, what's the time?
10:30 to 12:30?
But if you send me an email saying that you would be interested, I can tell you the positions that are available and give you the exact times.
Okay.
Okay? Because if you're a judge, there's a little bit of a commitment to come a little bit earlier to the event so that you can have a session on how to do the judging. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. You're welcome. Okay, next we'll have the new resource report. Dr. Glass.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So before I go over what we will have on the agenda, I just wanted to make everyone aware. The Chester High School District does participate in the Delaware County Healthcare Trust Fund. And we just recently had our first look review for our 2025-2026 medical. So we are looking at a potential 7.35% increase for our insurances. The final look will be in March, so we'll be able to give an exact. But we will start using this information for our budgeting processes. For the agenda next week, we will be presenting for approval for the receiver, two new hires, a computer and IT teacher, as well as a learning support teacher, tuition reimbursement and salary adjustments, two retirements, and three resignations, additional after-school staff at Chester High School in Spencer, the PBIS staff for Main Street, as well as different leadership positions throughout the district. We will also be presenting for approval, six new positions that will directly support our school and different initiatives for our students. Two will be part-time equity support specialists that will support equitable learning and support department, which is under Ms. Bowser. Those positions will be funded through the 2024-2025 Ready to Learn Grant. We will also be presenting for two home and school visitors, which will be full-time positions to support Ms. Sharon Yarbray's department under Children's, Climate, and Culture for the 2024-2025 school year. They will also be funded through Ready to Learn Grant. And we will also be presenting for two part-time after-school coordinators for under federal programs to support Ms. Hales. And they will be funded through the 21st Century Grant for the 2024-2025 school year.
So when you say 2024 or 2025 school year, after the 25?
So we would have to reapply for it to be approved in a grant. If we decide to keep the positions, we would have to find a different funding source for them.
In the beginning, you said, I'm not sure what the time. Right, Mitch? Were they available or they were filled?
So these are new positions, so none of them are filled. So they just got approved through the grant, so we're adding them. This will be on the agenda to be added to the personnel budget. So the budget is passed in July. We just got our funding sources, we got our funding sources for Ready to Learn and 21st Century after the July 1 budget. So these positions are being added into it.
And at the end of June, at this presentation from Dr. Meehan, all the new positions that have been created and were supposed to flow into this year, right? And I don't remember two equity support staff being part of that, even though I hear you saying that they're due because of the funding and everything. But that presentation that reported at the conference, all of the new positions and how they would support central office and at the school level. So I'm, I thought, one, we still didn't get, we didn't get a proper job description for everything about. Not to say that with the positions not needed, but just getting the job descriptions to understand what that encompassed is. And now we have two supports that are going underneath that space. And I don't understand what the definition of equity is wanting to be in that space. And I just wanted to be mindful that anything that's charged, it's a good. You're wanting to hear me say, and I really know everybody, I want to get tired of the saying, but my personal effort goes into that. And so anything attached to advocacy or ready to learn or anything that came down, I want to make sure that we're able to create a narrative around that to show that rather than go to achievement, something is happening with those spaces that we created. So I'm absolutely not saying that the positions are not needed. But I assume that that grant that we had at the end of that year took into account all the positions that were needed to support the staff, students, and the office in this year.
Okay.
So I do believe that position, those equity specialists were on that.
So I wasn't in media, so I don't know. I'm not sure what you're referring to, so.
But I can be sure that equity positions were part of that flow chart that Dr. Meehan presented.
So we had only one equity position, and that was the promotion of Ms. Bowser. There was no one underneath for her to support that. It's her movement and really not even movement because it was said she was already doing the work. So basically, we've given her the title that fit her work, which I'm not against. But what I am, and I'm not against needing the support. What I'm saying is that outlook was supposed to be everything that sustained us through the year. So I don't want it to be that because we're getting additional funding, that we're creating positions because we're getting funding, because the funding is going to be there every year. So that's, that's my only concern. Anybody have anything else?
I guess after her saying that there is a description or a narrative behind those positions based on how you got the money for it, right?
So when they submitted the 24-25 application, there were job descriptions that were submitted for the equity support specialists, and I do have those.
Because I know they talked about one for the.
Primary and one for.
Positions that you're having to help with choice.
Yes, so these are primary. One, each of the positions, one will be for primary, one will be for secondary.
Now, these are hiring under new funding?
I'm sorry?
Are these hiring under new funding?
So when we budgeted for 7-1, although because the state's budget was not passed, there's always the proposed budget and then there's the actual budget. So without the actual proposed budget, yes, we assume that if passed, this is what we would do with the money. However, as of 7-1, you have to pass a balanced budget. So we passed the budget without these positions in it because we were waiting for the confirmation of the state's budget. So now that the state's budget were approved, we were given these allocations. We're now able to go into the personnel budget to add them into it so that we can hire them.
I just think that it would have been very beneficial because we've seen, we've seen that because we only saw what it looked like with what we had. We never got a chance to see what it looked like after.
So and it's not that I'm in a disagreement, it's that I wasn't in the meeting. So it's hard for me to provide you an explanation for something that I was not a part of. But I can definitely relay that information back to Dr. Meehan, and maybe she can follow up with you guys next week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, it's the report, ESAR report from Ms. Meehan.
Good evening.
Good evening. Excuse me. So I was going over the financial report. I don't have any ESAR items to discuss. I think we're just wrapping up a lot of. We had, we did have a meeting this morning, which kind of went over our outstanding ESAR items, but those were items that were already presented before, expenses that we were spending on ESAR. So that we're in the wrap-up stage of the ESAR items. As far as the agenda items, C1 through C4 are the monthly reports. The, and you all have a copy of those reports. The treasure, the treasure tax collection report, as you can see, that number's getting smaller and smaller each month. We're pretty much wrapping up the collections. I think by February, they're considered delinquent, and then they'll be moving into another category. So right now, we have, we collected about 600,000 in tax revenue. And if we take the year-to-date collection, it's fairly close to what was budgeted for the year. C2 is a snapshot picture of the account balances in each one of the accounts for the district. If you have any questions, just let me know. C3 is the payroll, which typically runs about 2.3, 2.5, somewhere around there. And then C, at least C4 is the payables. And that again is a listing of all the checks that have been issued for the month of October. One comment about the payables information. Excuse me. That number does, is all the issue checks. So if you take into consideration what we spent on charter, we spent about 6.5 million dollars of that 10 million dollars on charter school. So like 60% of what we spent for the month of October was charter school related, either brick and mortar or cyber. And then contracted services, that would be like our mental health services, professional services, or mental health services, that totaled about 1 million dollars, which represents about 10% of that total, 10 million. And then grant-funded amounts of that 10 million dollars was 1.28, which represents about 17%. So if you take into account transportation, which was about 6%, the remaining balance of the operating costs of what's remaining is roughly $900,000, which is like 10% of that total. So just to keep that in mind, the charter school, although coming forward, we'll have some reduced prices affected at the beginning of the year, we still need advocacy to manage those resources, manage that cost, that expense. Any questions with those, with the reports?
Question, the taxes, we had reached what we normally get.
We have, we're fairly close to what we budgeted for the year.
So how much of that do we not?
Typically, it's a 15%, we collect about 85% of what we invoice. And then the 15% we, when we don't collect it, it goes into delinquency. We have an agreement with a, with a financier that will buy those delinquent taxes.
How would you all want to collect?
Ecollect is very good, actually. They're doing very good as collecting for the link to taxes. But, but again, like once they get past a certain point, we typically sell those and then we'll take, we'll sell a little less than what's actually due to someone through a third party, and they do the collections and they just pay us upfront for those dollars. And then that becomes their, their liability, so to speak.
Well, there is my question. How would you all?
So today, this week's update, as of yesterday, the last email we got yesterday, they are fairly close. They're very, well, the firm that we're working with, not they audit themselves, but the database that we're loading the information into, we're at like 97%. So they have a few things that they expect to wrap up within the next couple of weeks. So hopefully, we'll see a draft early next month. For the 20, I want to say 21, 22. Yes, 21, 22, yeah.
The, I mean, I think that we get funding programs, but we would get a lot of money from ESAR, ESAR's money. Now, looking down the, down the path, how we financed this program was, was that money in recent years?
So one of the things that I noticed with the district is that the bulk of the money was allocated to facilities maintenance, right? So it didn't, we didn't heavily rely on like paying for employees and that kind of thing. So I, so the bulk of it was, the bulk of it was for capital projects. And then after that. And then after that, um, curriculum and technology. And when you, I'm not sure what, what you're referring to as like programs, but then the remainder of that was curriculum and technology. So we, you know, loaded up technology as much as we could with the closing of ESR3 or ARPESR as much as we could. But that will be one of our challenges as we communicate the budget to, um, look at resources, additional resources to maintain the curriculum and as well as, uh, the technology. Now, again, we, we did, again, as was mentioned before, we do have res, additional resources coming to the district, um, and ready to learn, so.
I have a question about, um, seeing how you still look here. Because I thought we use iReady, but already the same, already understanding.
So iReady is used for K-8, they don't have a high school program for, um, iReady doesn't stand for high school, so IEXL is used at high school. It's limited to high school.
Okay, and, and, and is it new? Because I don't see iReady on here at all.
Well, then
Is i, IEXL though? IEXL is introduced this year. And that was through
This is just after, yes.
We started signing up.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the Lincoln Center have three spaces, three, um, they have three line items on here.
And it's probably for different, if the, if you look at the report, it's probably different accounts being charged for different things, different account numbers, yeah.
Do you know what they are?
I mean, I, I can, um, get back with you on that specifically, but most likely it's the, um, the, uh, support services that we're using Lincoln Center for. And it's probably just being charged to the different budget accounts, like different schools, like, so now the, the PDE is requiring us to allocate expenses to each school. So for every school, if there's a charge, each, each school has their own budget account number now. So you might see several lines for the same vendor because they, because they're being allocated to different schools.
And then the only, and you might not be able to answer this, it's okay if you can't, but when I see all the cyber charter schools that we have here and knowing that we have a digital academy, is there a way to have, uh, targeted marketing efforts toward bringing some of them children out of the cyber charter school and into the digital academy?
Ideally, that's what we would want to do, ideally, yes.
Is there something?
Is, is there a strategy, um?
Yeah, I think that was our, the C1, so
Yeah.
We had a conversation a couple of years ago, we did, um, send to bring some students back from the service schools. Weren't as successful, but we need to continue that campaign.
We have a, uh, system where we check whether we're paying property money to the right source or if that's not being taken over the hill.
Yeah, and that would be coming through our charter county levels as low as, um, Ms. Cadiz, but we do have a system to check.
Thank you.
Good, and, um, anybody else have any questions? And then the other agenda items that were coming up was four additional items, two of them were property reassessments, um, agreements, uh, which resulted in a reduction of taxes for those two properties. The one was, um, for myself to attend the PASBO conference, the annual conference in March. And then the other was, um, to sign an agreement with the DCIU, uh, with, uh, WGL Energy Services for the next two years to purchase, um, as a cooperative purchasing the energy for the next two years for the school district.
I have a question, but, um, that, did we spoke to, um, districts, um, Dr. Pearson's office there across from, you know, that was the, the building where the children used to go and get their, um, um, when they graduate to go with their diplomas and things like that, if they moved out? Is the writer across from, from, um, Coussa, that building right on the corner there? Old office, yes.
The city owns it.
City owns it, man.
Old Botan?
Say it again?
The old Botan building?
No. No.
Across from Coussa?
On Ninth Street, right on Ninth Street, across from Coussa, Dr. Pearson.
Building on the
Building, building on the corner.
And, um, the district has a
They used to, that's where you used to go pick up all your papers and things.
On the way here, I stopped at the light, they, they put out some kind of sign up there.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
People's Services, Dr. Wilson.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, there are, uh, just a couple of items that's on the agenda for this week, uh, or, or excuse me, next week for the receivers' agenda, uh, primarily related to agreements, uh, regarding, uh, with the DCI, excuse me, the, the Delaware County Health Department, uh, specifically for, uh, immunization nursing services. So they're going to fund a, uh, part-time position that supports, uh, schools throughout the district to make sure immunizations are up to date and also to fill on a per diem basis. Uh, we had a similar agreement the last year as well. Uh, additional updates, um, just in terms of immunizations, we are on track to meet the December 31st deadline in terms of immunization. So all of our nurses have been trained in the online system of how to check throughout the state. So in other words, when family goes to their doctors, we're able to pull those records regarding immunization. So when the families, uh, sometimes forget to bring that information to the schools, our nurses can actually check that information for themselves. So the nurses have been trained on that and have ongoing professional development. We do, of course, have a nurse or, uh, medical assistant at all of our buildings. Uh, some of our buildings, of course, such as, such the high school, have more than one. Uh, we also, in some cases, uh, provide, uh, private duty nursing, one-to-one nursing for some students who, uh, require that as a part of their IEP. Uh, in addition, in terms of our counselors and social workers, we are continuing with our implementation of the multi-tier system of supports in terms of MTSS. So we have, uh, worked in terms of providing professional development to administrators, to counselors, to social workers. Uh, they're using Panorama to, uh, be able to create intervention plans for our students, documenting those intervention plans. We're able to view the data regarding those intervention plans. So for instance, approximately 374 intervention plans have been created to date, which have data associated with that. So we're able to see the specific student, uh, who's providing the support, uh, what support they're providing, uh, to those students. Uh, we are also, of course, have a district-wide, uh, MTSS for mental health team. Uh, so one of the things that we have added is, uh, an opportunity for parents to participate in that process. So we did reach out to school leaders to ask for parents, uh, to participate on that team. And so in December, uh, there'll be a meeting where a few parents have expressed interest to support that initiative. Uh, in terms of our mental health services throughout the district, uh, I did talk about that, I think at the last receivers' meeting, uh, that, uh, is going well, just in terms of we have the positions filled, the persons are providing the support in terms of intervention plans that are already mentioned. Uh, some of those create additional opportunities for partnerships. So for instance, um, uh, some of those partners will be participating in the youth summit that is coming up, uh, just to provide some support and training for parents around mental health supports, um, not only in the district, but ways that they can support their, uh, children at home. And then I would say, lastly, we administered our, uh, district-wide survey. Uh, overall, we are pleased with the results. So for instance, we had 314 staff members that responded to the survey. We had, uh, 79.3% of our students in grades three to 12, which represents approximately, uh, eight hun, excuse me, 1,892 students, uh, who participated on the survey. Uh, that survey is, uh, very helpful because it provides, uh, information about individual students in terms of how their, uh, sense of belonging with school, their sense of safety, um, but also we can provide targeted support to those students based on their survey results. So we are in the process of sharing those survey results with, uh, district leaders as well as school leaders. The school leaders will develop, uh, action plans and revise some of their CSI plans, uh, as well as the 90-day action plans through the UVA program so that we can just make sure that the plans are meeting the needs of, uh, students and staff. And so again, uh, we, uh, had an opportunity, this is the first time that we've administered those surveys, uh, from my understanding, in the last couple of years. Uh, they were very extensive, we did translate in multiple languages. We are about to launch the parent survey as well. Uh, so we will, uh, start the parent survey on Monday. Uh, that survey will be sent across, uh, various platforms. Uh, we did collaborate with, uh, the chief of staff and some other folks in terms of input, uh, but it will also be translated in different languages and provide an opportunity for parents and caregivers to give some input in terms of their experiences with schools, uh, supports they may need at home, as well as, uh, their preferences around workshops that they may feel like we need, uh, as well as best times for meetings and opportunities to participate. Uh, are there any questions? Yes.
The only thing that I want to ask is if the intervention plans that you're using from that system are being tailored to the student body, are you using them exactly as they exist in, in that platform?
So they are, uh, tailored, uh, but also the intervention plans, the strategies that are attached to the intervention plans are best practices. So some of those are ones that schools are already using anyway. So for instance, a behavior contract is not a new concept to school leaders, they're already using it. That is one of the strategies that is in, uh, Panorama. Um, however, they're not required to use that specific strategy. So if there's a student who needs a different strategy, they can add in a custom strategy, and that's an opportunity where something that might be more appropriate, they can use. Uh, attendance improvement plan, which, uh, the district historically has used, is an example of a strategy that's there. Uh, but again, they can use a different strategy if that's more appropriate. So there's a customization, uh, which we're using for some students as necessary. Uh, for some of our grant programs, we have specific programs that we purchase, such as like the Spark Initiative, which, uh, our mental health professionals have been trained on, they'll start using that. That particular one is not in the Panorama da, uh, database, but we will add it as a custom strategy for the students who will best be, uh, serviced by that particular support. So again, it does provide that flexibility.
So specifically, I'm, I'm looking for the type of language and the way things are written out or asked in Panorama, only because I had the ability to view some things, and I just want to make sure that what our students are seeing or in our staff, it, um, that the language is appropriately written.
Can you, can you say more to clarify?
Um,
Gram, grammatical?
Not even grammatical, but just the, the way that is, things were asked. So, and then I, I assume that this would have been just for parents or whatever, so I didn't get to see what the survey looked like that went out to staff and students, but just some of the things were like, how much effort are you putting in with your child, which is very, could be very condescending to some parents. And so I noticed that at the top it said Panorama, and I wouldn't have made the connection unless I had saw that at the top. So that's why I'm asking, the, although there are templates and things in there that are best practices, are we reviewing them to make sure that even if it's a best practice, the language is such that it's sensitive to the, to our body of staff, students, and parents, whoever it's been administered to? Yeah.
Right. Well, that was again, a draft of the survey, so there's opportunity for feedback. So if there's specific feedback that can be taken into consideration before it's released. The purpose behind those questions is they're all the self-reports. So from a parent perspective, if you feel like you've given a lot of effort in a specific area, then that's something you have an opportunity to report, to weigh in on. Um, also, the surveys are not, the parent surveys are not attached to specific families or something like that. Um, but then there is a family who might feel like, I'm not able to give as much effort as I would like to, and here are some of the reasons that that might be attributed to. And so there are questions that also may ask a parent, um, you know, what are some of the barriers to them being able to possibly put forth the effort that they might want to put forth? And then be able to identify some of those barriers. So some of those might be school barriers, some of those could be community barriers. Um, but certainly it's something where, um, if there is additional, you know, adjustments that we need to make in terms of questions, uh, we can do that in time before that's released.
Distribution and collection of the survey for the parents?
So, uh, the parents have an opportunity, uh, to complete the survey electronically, and then there are also paper copies that will be available at schools as well.
I have a concern about the length. You know that sometimes, um, when things get lengthy, you don't get a complete product. So we might need to tailor that to 25 or 30 as a
And the initial draft that I sent also indicated that some questions were going to be removed from that draft, so that was already taken into account. However, the survey will take approximately 12 minutes. Um, it is, the goal is to avoid opportunities to be ambiguous in the responses. So we wanted to make sure that the survey captured enough items so that all the things that we want to address are addressed. Um, the same commentary was made about the student survey as well, and we had 1,800 students who responded to that survey. And what's really awesome about the student survey is Toby Farms had the highest, highest, uh, survey response. And so they had 94% of their students. And we all know middle school students don't have to do anything that we ask them to do. Uh, so the fact that, uh, 94% of our middle school students completed the survey, uh, at Toby Farms is really awesome, and they led the district. There were three other schools, uh, Main Street, uh, Coussa, and ESA Middle. So both of our middle schools had over a 90% response rate. And so I think that's really important because part of what we're trying to do is push the bar of our expectations, that we, uh, constantly in these meetings and other forums, talk about wanting input and giving an opportunity for everyone to give input. And so this is an opportunity for parents and caregivers to give input. They will have well over three weeks to respond, so, uh, to the point where it's not going to be a quick closed survey where not everybody had an opportunity. Um, we, uh, really were intentional about communicating with school leaders every day about their survey responses. We provided them information with the student surveys, they were attached to individual students, so we could see which students had not completed the survey. So it's that opportunity where, you know, school leaders are competitive, so when they see that maybe some of their families are not responding, they'll put that positive peer pressure out there to be able to say, we really want your voice heard, this is your opportunity. And so I think from that perspective, uh, when we put it out there, we set the vision plane, people will run with it and they respond, and we can be surprised at the results. So in other words, again, uh, just for context, the last time the Philadelphia School District administered their survey, they had 54.3% of their students that responded to the survey. So again, we had 79.6% of our students respond to the survey. So we're not in competition with any other district, but I would say certainly, uh, again, for all the things that we talked about, so the length of the survey, we talked about, you know, the readability of the survey, again, 79.3%, uh, 6% of our students responded to the survey. So I, I'm hoping for the same results with the parents. If we need to make adjustments, so we will also administer another survey later in the year as well, so we'll have opportunity to make adjustments if necessary. But again, it's a great opportunity, anyone that you know in your circle of influence, please encourage them to pick up copies of the survey, to respond to the survey. The links that will be sent out, uh, via email, social media platforms as well, because it's a great opportunity to capture, you know, all the great ideas that they have and opportunities for us to improve as a district.
Well, there'd be an opportunity, so if you say that we have 1,800 babies that took their time to complete this, would there be an opportunity for us to see what they asked for and how the district is accommodating what they asked for?
Absolutely. So part of the work with, um, school leaders is, uh, so one, um, there'll be an opportunity to share those results out publicly so that, those opportunities for people to be aware of those results. We try to be intentional, so most of the questions are multiple choice selective response questions, obviously. Um, but then there were embedded in there some free response questions as well. So for instance, you know, under Dr. Sutton's leadership, one of the questions we put in there was a question around what world language students would like to take as an example. So we got some very interesting results, we gave them like four or five choices, but we were able to gauge from those options what world languages that could possibly inform, uh, programming at the high schools or middle school upcoming year. Uh, we asked questions that were free response questions a, around, uh, student safety, for instance, um, and we got some, uh, tremendous responses around that. So again, with the survey of questions, free response questions are a little harder to like, you know, be able to categorize the data, but they do provide a lot of information. The same is true with, uh, the staff surveys as well. Uh, we ask questions in terms of, you know, what's Uh, we ask questions in terms of, you know, what's one thing the district could do to improve your, uh, sense of belonging or something like that to the district? And we got a lot of responses that are really helpful that will be shared out with, uh, central leadership and others in terms of just ways that we can improve as a district. We asked a question about, uh, what has had the greatest impact on your mental health? And so we got all kinds of responses around that as well. So again, uh, we try to be intentional where, again, there are some multiple choice sort of responses, but those open-ended ones are also very impactful and we'll be sharing out. So school leaders, specifically around the student surveys, will be developing action plans in terms of how they're going to address that because we do want them to, in December, to share with student bodies in terms of assemblies, town halls and other forms that they have specifically with the students. We've heard your voice, we saw what you indicated and as a result of that, here's what we had in mind, get it right and to kind of get some feedback from, get some feedback from students, uh, so that it's not just adults doing what we think, but it's also responding to what's best.
That's good.
Remember you said at the school level, they're supposed to have action plans created that specifically, specifically aligned to the results of the survey for the students?
Correct, and part of my role is meeting with school leaders to support them around the action planning process.
Very, very good.
Thank you, any additional questions? Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, last but certainly not least, uh, special name, Dr. Mike.
Everybody, I don't have anything on the agenda item for public, um, consumption, but I did want to give you some updates on some things that have been happening in special education. One of the things is the, um, S S As or Student Support Assistance Professional Development, starting in October. They have been, uh, participating in the full day professional development days. Um, and it has been received really well, they're very happy that they're able to come. We started the first one alongside their teachers, um, learning about I D E A. Our second one, we partnered with Widener University and, uh, the, the head of their special ed department came in and did a training. And then the one in December, there, we're gonna, um, work with our behavior consultant and she's gonna work with our S S As in regards to behavioral strategies and how to be supportive in the classroom with students who are struggling. Um, and so i- it's been really wonderful, the teachers, um, are loving that their S S As are able to go to trainings with them. Um, along with the professional development for the S S As, we are also creating a handbook for them. So when they're onboarded, they'll be able to have this handbook that they can keep with them that will have strategies to help them in their day-to-day. Um, the other things that we are doing is we have partnered, uh, with O V R, which is the Office of Vacational Rehabilitation. Uh, they come in once a month and conduct sessions with our students. And then last week, we actually did mock interviews. Uh, we had two sessions of mock interviews for our students and we have four more sessions scheduled. And so this is really helpful for students to, you know, gauge what it's like to go to a job interview, you know, and, and, and help them prepare for that. We also partnered with O V R in regards to a parent session. We are going to have a table in the December seventh, um, community event, um, where parents can come and get information in regards to the service and have, um, support in signing up. You're welcome. So yes, it is mandatory, so I've sent most of them, well, all of them, all the S S As or agency, from agencies. And so communication has been sent out to all of the agencies that it is mandatory for them to attend. If for whatever reason that they cannot attend, if they're out sick or they have a previous appointment, I make sure that they do get the presentations, um, so that they know what is happening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Awesome, as always.
Yeah.